So the tape.
And with that, I will call to order our special called City Council meeting for August 27th, 2024. The first item of business we have is citizen comment. I have a number of speaker cards. If you'd like to make a comment tonight, I'd ask you to please fill out a card with Lily there in the back and I'll call you up as we go. First speaker is Charles Taylor. I'll ask each speaker to please approach the podium microphone. Please state your name and address and you'll have three minutes to give comment. Yeah, thank you for being here, Mr. Taylor.
Good evening to the council. I am Charles A. Taylor. I reside at 2310 Nixon Drive, Longview, Texas. And this is an opportunity with the upcoming National Night Out to give a shout out to some of the most effective individuals in the city government and their effect on the attitudes of the citizens of Longview. My comments are concerning Mr. Stillman, effectively known as JP. And our night out at the Nixon location is always a big activity. And Mr. Stillman is always there spreading the happiness, the authority, as well as the services that the fire department offers. Now, you might say fire department, but how effective is that? It is very important as well as attracting residents, the safety, insurance rates, and the quality of life in the neighborhood. Not only Mr. Stillman, but our councilman, Mr. Ray Wade, is always present and he offers assistance in any area. My comment is to the other city council people as well as the other offices, they provide a comfortable feeling for the residents of our area. And I would suggest you take a kudos from them and do likewise because it's very important that fire safety as well as the attitude of the residents is to the point of feeling comfortable in our city. Thank you for an opportunity to share my perspective with the council. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Taylor, and we appreciate the commercial for National Night Out. I know all of our council members are very engaged and excited about that coming up. So if your neighborhood has not signed up, got a good crowd here tonight. It's time to sign up. Next on the list, I have Ms. Lyndal McAllister.
Mayor Ishiara, City Manager Roland Mcfee, and City Council members. I'm Lyndal McAllister, retired program administrator for Aspire Mentoring Program. I'm a graduate of Longview High School and both of my children graduated from Pine Tree High School. I grew up in Longview. As you prepare to vote tonight on cutting funds for Aspire Mentoring Program, I want to briefly state to you the benefits of this program for the citizens of our community. The program was initiated 28 years ago by a coalition of school officials, medical professionals, and concerned citizens. The program has been a major contributor to our city, receiving the national award for 100 communities that care for several years, as well as twice been recognized and received the Governor's Award in Texas for outstanding volunteer programs, most recently in 2023. The program was also one of 52 nationally recognized in the nation and received a federal grant to fund children of prisoners in our community. This is not your average mentoring program in our nation. The city's small investment to partially fund five staff members yields support, training, activities, and case management annually for over 100 children from very hard places and circumstances in our community. The children are black, white, and brown, and served by our citizens who, as often as possible, look like them and can speak their language. Five staff members are mobilizing a volunteer force of 100 citizens to serve these children. With most of the children coming from poverty, many of their families can barely provide food and clothing, much less fees for mentoring. There are many other cities throughout the United States who also provide mentoring for youth as a community mobilization to prevent crime, stop drug abuse, prevent school dropouts, as well as other opportunities for youth to give back to their communities. This is a small investment of funds for a big return. Through these 28 years, we've seen many of our mentees become active community members, serving in roles such as a Longview police officer, Asbury House Director, accountants, social worker at Oceans, and the list goes on. The mentors, our citizens, are also changed by the experience of mentoring. They learn about our community in a whole different way and invest in helping our children from hard places to become productive citizens. Some of the community leaders who have served as mentors, and I'm going to say this is not a complete list, Mayor Kristin Ishiara, Keith Bonds with assistance from Sheridan, Wilburn, Roland Mcfee, Reverend Louis Thompson Jr., Dr. Shalonda Adams, Melanie Pertle, Charles Rader, Joel Johnson, Oscar Polk, Taquita Dudley, Merrick Graham, and the list goes on and on. I repeat, this is a small investment of funds for the lives changed for the betterment of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McAllister. Next speaker is Charmaine Wright-Or.
Good evening, council, mayor. My name is Charmaine Wright-Or. I live at 3637 U.S. Highway 259 North. I'm coming in regards to speaking on behalf of Partners in Prevention. I'm coming from the perspective of being a mentor. I am fairly new to the Longview area. Been here for about four years, but the way in which I wanted to engage with the community was to volunteer. And this program allowed me to do such. And as a mentor, I could see the positive impact that this program had and is having within the community. And my family was able to impact the life of a young lady who had been in the program for many, many years, throughout her elementary school, all the way through her high school year. I was fortunate to come into her life in her senior year, and because of our involvement, we were instrumental in allowing her to have the space to graduate when her family situation fell apart. And we took her into our home. The point that I wanted to make is the fact that what the roles of the city members were able to do that are leading in the program, they acted as a liaison and were able to bring me as a citizen to be instrumental in helping another citizen in the community. Without the services, the training, the support that they were able to give and dedicate themselves to, I would not have been able to act in this way with the oversight and the assistance that I needed, bringing together many city services and many private services together to help support this child. So I just want to make sure that you understood that for a new resident coming in, what a vital impact that this team in Partners in Prevention serves in this community and helping new citizens to come and fill a part of and impact the lives of future leaders within the community. So, thank you very much. And, oh, the other only point is through this service, I wanted to do more, and now I'm serving on the steering committee for the Partners in Prevention. So I come from that perspective as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Or. Amanda Ross is next.
My name's Amanda Ross. I live at 2110 Katy Lee Lane here in Longview. I've been a mentor with the Aspire Program for three years. My mentee is one of five children. She's luckier than a lot of the kids in this program, as she has a mother who works very hard to keep their family together. I cannot say too much about my relationship with my mentee or about the struggles and successes that I've seen from her, because that would be a violation of the trust that we have built between us. I can say that it is a proven fact that youths who have a mentor are more likely to graduate high school, more likely to volunteer in their community, and more likely to seek out leadership roles. I have seen within the Aspire Mentor Program mentors driving their mentees to college visits and helping them fill out college applications when their guardians either couldn't or wouldn't help. I've seen mentors get their mentees out of abusive situations because while others may have missed the signs, a mentor can get close enough to see. I've seen a mentor help their mentee get into a treatment program when they were suicidal. I've seen them teach their mentees how to fish and garden, how to talk professionally on the phone, and how to behave in a job interview. I have seen mentees graduate from high school when they have had everything stacked against them. These things are just a drop in the bucket of the ways that I have witnessed how mentors become vital people in their mentees' life. My case manager is Whitney. She has a bachelor's degree in social work, and she's been with the Aspire Program for seven years. She helps to match new mentors and mentees. She helps train mentors. She assists putting together events for mentors and mentees and their families. Beyond that, many of the mentors are not trained professionals. We need the support of our case managers. We need them to tell us what to do in situations that are out of our control. We need them to build relationships with counselors and schools so that the children who most need the service are the ones getting it, because as citizens, we can't possibly know that. Without the funding for these case managers, Aspire cannot continue. I have volunteered for many local nonprofits, and every one of them have paid employees that keep these programs going. At the last city council meeting, a question was asked, why is it the city's responsibility to fund the program? And I would say in part because the city started the program. The city saw the need and the value of Aspire, and the city has continued to see its benefits for almost 30 years. It saddens me that when budgets get hard, it seems that programs designed to help the most vulnerable of our community are the first ones to be questioned. When the amazing Mr. Rogers spoke before Congress while trying to save his own nonprofit, he said, this is what I give. I give an expression of care every day to each child, to help him or her realize that he or she is unique. I say to each child, you've made this day a special day by just being you. There's no person in the whole world like you, and I like you just the way you are. Our mentors say this to our mentees every single day, and I implore you to do the right thing and to give the funding that this program needs to continue.
Thank you, Ms. Ross. Next, I have Melissa Cosper.
Melissa Cosper, 214 Civil Lane, Longview, Texas. I've been involved with the city's mentoring program since its inception 29 years ago. As the original group of girls mentored in 1995, I've also served as a mentor and as a member of their advisory committee. By the time the program found me at the age of 11, my homes had consisted of 13 different places, among various states, cities, and conditions. My family dynamics had involved domestic violence, alcoholism, drug abuse, criminal activity, a prison sentence, and visits to that state penitentiary. Yes, the mentoring group gave us new experiences and role models, but ultimately, it was a catalyst that broke a generational curse. My family's with me today. My family begun repairing and changed its course. Having a mentor is most often a luxury that is inherited. It's not a service that's paid for. I mentored an eight-year-old girl who had three siblings, and her mother had just underwent brain surgery. If the families are required to pay for this kindness with money that they don't have, I predict the program will lose its effectiveness and ultimately dissolve. This program was founded on creative partnerships, and it couldn't survive without the coordination of its school systems to identify at-risk children such as myself, the case management of our social workers to regulate its effectiveness, and the time our trained volunteers dedicate outside of their personal and professional commitments. My families live in proof that the program holds long-term economic impact. I'm a first-generation high school graduate and college graduate of Laterno University. I have served this city as a teacher, a nonprofit executive, a marketing professional, and now a business owner and a business advisor. My family has served this city by owning, operating, and growing a successful construction company that has created and maintained homes, created jobs for the workforce, and put food on many tables, including ours. These families will most likely stay in this area without the means to relocate, just as we did. Longview has the jurisdiction to decide if these families will be repairing our streets or running them, building our homes or occupying our shelters, serving on our boards or serving time in our jails, starting businesses or drawing unemployment. Aspire Mentoring Program changed the course of my family tree. Right now, you have the authority to influence the course of our local economy by allowing this evolved 30-year-old organization to continue compounding interests with its partners in this community.
Thank you, Ms. Cosper. Mitchell Randall, you're next.
My name is Mitchell Randall. I currently live at 112 Shoreview Circle, Longview, Texas, and I work as a legal assistant for the Gregg County District Attorney. I would like to start by thanking the members of our city council for their diligence in working toward a budget that balances the service that the city provides with the cost to its citizens. I would also like to state that I am offering this information concerning Partners in Prevention, and it's a reflection of my own views and research. It is not in any way reflective of the district attorney. That being said, I believe that there are a few important considerations to be made when looking at programs like Partners in Prevention and the Aspire Mentoring Program. According to NoKidsInPrison.org in Texas, it can cost just over $175,000 a year per person to imprison a juvenile. Comparatively, it costs roughly $9,016 per year to provide a public education to the same child. Now, according to BeAMentor.org, the average cost of running a program to match 100 students each with a mentor results in an average cost per match per year of $1,557. I know that I cannot speak for everybody. However, I personally feel that the just under $1,600 cost of mentorship is a nominal fee when compared with the $175,000 cost of incarceration. And that does not even touch on the benefits to the quality of the child's life, which you cannot, or moreover should not, put a value on. I can say that for Aspire, 94 students are currently matched with a mentor. 10 volunteers have been trained, passed background checks, and have students selected as matches with only the final paperwork pending. There are 56 students on the waitlist with 10 pending matches, nine trained mentors waiting to be matched, and a total of 37 students who desire to have a mentor but are waiting due to the program being at capacity for the number of cases assigned to the three case managers. For myself, this shows both a need and a desire for this program in the community. This program is a greatly needed expression of love in and to our community. I know that my time this evening is limited, so I will leave you with another quote from Mr. Fred Rogers. Knowing that we can be loved exactly as we are gives us the best opportunity for growing into the healthiest of people. Thank you all again for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Randall. Next, I have Robert Gibbons.
Robert Gibbons, 1130 East Hawkins Parkway. I'm also here to talk on behalf of the Aspire Mentoring Program. My mentee has just recently graduated college, which was a big deal. We started the program when he was in seventh grade. And, you know, what I wanted to say is, you know, going through this program started out with us just a love of basketball together, going to the gym, shooting around, you know, going to his games, talking about strategy, his jump shot. And it evolved into so much something more, so much deeper of a relationship with that. He, you know, with most of these kids in this program, you have the issues at home. And the people at Aspire were so receptive to every phone call I had to make. I was not equipped to deal with some of the family issues that he had because I had not gone through them myself. I didn't know many people that had gone through the issues he had gone through. And, you know, they were constantly on the phone, constantly, anytime I needed them, guiding me what to say and equipping me to handle the situation. And, you know, from, you know, from constant suspensions in school to better behavior and eventually graduation, it was a huge milestone for us. And I can tell you without a doubt, it wouldn't have been possible without the support of the program. One thing I'd like, the other thing I'd like to add is, you know, he's holding a job right now, which is great. We had a day at Kilgore that got him thinking about the future, and that was huge. And as soon as he was starting to talk about trades, we were able to pick up, I was able to pick up the phone, and they were able to set me up with a counselor at Kilgore, getting through the programs, talking about the aid he might potentially need. And it was all set up there for us, not something I would have known how to do myself. So, you know, with that being said, I won't take any more of your time. You know, this is an individual perspective. Other people, people in the make can talk about the grand scheme of things. This has been so impactful for me, and I hope, you know, and my mentee. And, you know, I would just like to see, you know, this program continue, and the people of Aspire being able to provide the support that the mentors need. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Gibbons. Dr. Lacey McRae.
How's it going? Good. So my name is Dr. Lacey McCree, and I live at 4 Amherst Circle. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I come before you to discuss the critical role that Partners in Prevention provides in their mentoring program and how it plays a viable role in our community. I want to advocate for the continued support and the necessary expansion. This summer, I was appointed to serve on the Partners in Prevention Steering Committee. And while I'm new to this role, the Partners in Prevention Committee is not. And so y'all just heard a whole bunch of stats about it being around for 30 years and making, I would say, a measurable and important impact in our community. It's my current understanding that the contracted employees that we have are maxed out in their caseload. And so these employees that, I believe at the last meeting, is paid $30 an hour, they work collectively about 137 hours a month, and all we're asking is to increase their capacity and their ability to serve. So despite their ability to do what they can with the current budget, their caseloads can't meet the needs. So I would urge you to do two things. Either expand the budget, increase the budget so that it allows for more staffed hours, enabling them to support the children that need it most. It'll be an investment in our youth and in the future of our community. Early intervention through mentoring can prevent future costs associated with crime, dropout rates, and other social issues. We can also leverage grant opportunities by expanding the budget. We can also take advantage of matching grant opportunities, effectively doubling our resources. We could secure additional money to support the program, and this would allow for more hours and offset those costs in the budget. I also think that community collaboration that was mentioned at the last meeting is important. We have the opportunity to work more closely with our local school districts and other community partners. If we were to share the financial responsibility, we can ensure that the program remains sustainable without overburdening the city's budget. This partnership can lead to innovative funding, and these types of strategic partnerships would be with like the school districts and other established nonprofits in the community. If the city were to administer the coordination of those services, then that would be great, but I believe we're the only ones that do what we do. So I recognize this is a hard decision, and I believe that creative problem solving is important and that y'all are great at that. So I urge you to think about what that looks like for us as a community. That's it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Next, I have Kristin Ray.
Good evening, members of city council. My name's Kristin Ray. I live at 444 Sunnybrook Drive in Longview, Texas. My name's Kristin Ray, and I'm here today as a community stakeholder and advocate for the mentorship program that serves our city's at-risk youth. From 2015 to 2019, I had the privilege of serving as a mentor with the Aspire Program, then known as Forever Friends. The experience profoundly impacted me, and I bonded, and the bond that I formed with my mentee over those years lasted well beyond those years. And now she lives in Texas with her husband and young son, and we remain in contact. I'm so grateful for the lifelong friendship that grew out of the mentee-mentor relationship. These are the types of relationships that mentor, that mentorship programs like the Aspire foster. They create connection, and they go beyond the moment, shaping lives and providing hope where it is often needed most. Today, I come before you not just as a former mentor, but as someone who works for a nonprofit here in Longview. I'm familiar with the referral process that connects young people with mentors. It is the dedicated staff, those same positions that are now being considered for cuts, who handle the legwork that leads to those most meaningful matches. When I make a referral, I trust that the caseload coordinator and other staff members will handle the process with care and sensitivity it requires. The roles are not just administrative, they are crucial to the success of the entire program. The caseloads must be monitored, and the coordinator ensures the details are managed effectively. Cutting these positions would not only create gaps in the system, but could also jeopardize the future of these essential programs. I understand the budget decisions are difficult. I respect the responsibility you have in this community. However, I urge you to take the time to fully understand the role of each position before considering these cuts. These are not just jobs. They are vital to the success program, successful programs that serve our at-risk youth. Removing key positions will lead these programs struggling and scrambling to meet the needs of the community. of the community. Partners in Prevention, including Aspire, have played a significant role in informing and educating our community. In fact, the Aspire Program was honored with the Governor's Award last year. It's clear that the right people are in these positions, in this place, doing work that matters. Before making any decisions, I ask that you engage in conversation with those who know these programs best. Let's work together to ensure that these programs continue to thrive and serve the young people who need it most. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Lindy Belt.
My name is Lindy Belt, and I live outside the city, but I have been with Forever Friends since 2002. In that time period, I have had the joy of working with nine, my ninth mentors who I'm working with now. My only qualification for doing this was for a, to try to make a difference, to try to make a difference, and that was it. In this time period, I have had, I went to every training I could. The training has went across the board, and from everything, from human trafficking, actually from two ladies who were involved in human trafficking, to a day-long seminar that was actually putting me in the life that day, solving the problems of what my girls were solving. Suddenly, parents pulled out of the home to go to prison, dealing with everything that they were. Over these years, I've also been a group leader. And in this, and some of the girls, I had no training for this, other than what I got through Forever Friends and Aspire during this time period. I called some of these employees at night when I was finding, going down, down 80, and saw two of my girls walking into a very high-trafficking area. And they picked up the phone, and they answered what gave me the courage to do what I needed to do at that time. Two of my girls lived in situations and dealt with situations that there's no person on this earth should ever have to deal with. Both of them are in college now. I've got currently three of my ex-girls, and this, I haven't done this, this program has done this. These ladies who will pick up the phone, who will give me training to handle this, this is the ones that have done it, and honestly are God. The, my last, my number eight mentor, she left last month for the Air Force. It is a very good program, but I would also, it scares me very much when I go to these trainings and see these ladies that are coming in for the first time, they're so afraid they're gonna make a mistake. But they've got the training, the professionals with degrees, and also the love to guide them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Belt. Our next speaker card I have is Tommy Finkley.
Tommy Finkley, 4736 West Loop, 281, Longview, Texas. I wanted to come to council tonight and, when reflecting on my time as a councilperson 20 years ago and running for election and sitting up there just where you sit and reflecting on my time, and, you know, they don't hand you a handbook to tell you how to be a councilperson when you get elected. You kind of learn as you go, and for the most part, you know, you want to try to get along and kind of find your way through it. And it's not easy. It's not an easy process to sit up there and, and maneuver through the, the process and learn about budgets and learn about how the city works and, because the city doesn't, city government doesn't work as fast as business out in the world. It's real slow, you know, things don't go as fast as you want. There's big budgets, there's personnel, staff, directors. And I saw something on the agenda tonight. It kind of caught my eye, and it made me think about my time. And, you know, I promise you, when you are not sitting up there anymore, you'll look back and say, well, there's something I wish I hadn't have said, or something I wish I hadn't have done, or conflicts, or within the council, or anything, lots of things going into it. Personalities, issues, one person voting one way. It's not easy. But in my whole time, 20, from 20 years ago up till now, even before I was, got elected where Steve sits, I never heard of putting in a, going into executive session to consider the roles and duties of a city manager, a person that's worked here for 24 years, dedicated his whole life, worked his way up. And I know it's been a very difficult budget, budget session, lots of questions, you know, revenues are down, expenses are up. But Shannon, Derek, I respect both of you. I don't think that after three months, you might be here three months, it doesn't seem like you've been here three months yet, but I don't think this would be the right move from sitting on this council for three months to try to go in here and, I'm not sure what you're up to or your angle here. I know that you didn't call me back, and I know you don't call anybody else back. And I think that, Derek, this is not a road that you want to go down. This is not the way you want to go into your time as an elected official, Shannon. I don't think this is the road you want to go down.
That's three minutes. Thank you. I do not have any more speaker cards. Is there anyone that would like to make citizen comment and fill out a speaker card when they are done? All right, we will move on to the next item, which is a presentation and discussion regarding fees and budget. And this is under Mr. McPhee, but I'm actually going to kick this off just with kind of where we are in the process. So thank you for having the room filled tonight. We're always glad to have people here to be involved in city business, so thank you for taking time to show up. The budget process for the city began about two months ago with a presentation from Mr. McPhee with his recommended budget. He does that after about two months of meeting with all of his directors, reviewing their needs, and presenting a balanced budget based on what the anticipated revenues are. Based on the meetings that we have had with council, I have directed him to make some changes, which I'll present to you this evening. I believe that these changes address all of the concerns of council that we had discussed at prior meetings. However, all of these things remain open to discussion. I am looking to council tonight to make a vote on the recommended fees as well as the budget. It is important that we accomplish that city business in order to move on. So here are the recommendations from me that I'm asking you to approve and accept tonight in regards to changes to the budget. First, let's do fees. My recommendation is to remove all fee increases except for the water utility bill, which would go up a small amount, and we will have a separate presentation outlining that and the need for that. The failure of council to approve that small water increase would mean that there would be capital improvement projects in our water system that would not be allowed to take place. Since the water system stands alone as an enterprise fund, it is not a situation where we could pull that from other areas. It will need to be a standalone vote that we'll discuss in a minute, and there will be a presentation from Public Works on that. I'm not qualified to explain those infrastructure things to you. However, we'll do that separately. All other fees that were discussed last time, I've instructed them to remove from the proposed budget. That does mean, if that's council's direction, that there are cuts that need to come out of the budget. Obviously, less fees, which would provide revenue to the city, means that we have to talk about taking some things out of the budget that was originally proposed by our city manager, Mr. McPhee. In listening to council, here are the items that I have requested be removed from the budget. City Council has, I don't know if there's a slide for this, but all of the one-time expenditures that were originally included in your budget packet, that totals $353,000. Those are one-time things like updating flooring, some training, some other things. I've asked Mr. McPhee to remove that entirely from the budget. That does not mean that I think those things aren't important and that they shouldn't be addressed. That does mean, however, if we want to include that in the future, it will have to come back individually from Mr. McPhee with a recommendation to amend the budget or take that amount out of fund balance. It would not be included in our general operating budget. I did also instruct Mr. McPhee to restore road maintenance up to its original amount. We've discussed that several times here at the dais, that I think no council member or anyone in the city of Longview really wants to remove any of the amount of road maintenance. The general feedback we get from you guys is you would take all the money for road maintenance we can give. So that would restore that amount to be the original amount of road maintenance with no decrease. We cannot afford to do staff raises or bonuses this year. That stinks. We fully investigated whether we could afford to do it. We cannot. As Mr. McPhee originally presented to council, that is just not something that we can afford in our general operating budget, and it has not been included. Now to the cuts. The specific cuts that would need to be made for those things to happen include removing the line item, which is a contract with House of Disciples to pick up litter. That line item would be entirely removed, however, it would be replaced with a $50,000 amount that council would at a later time discuss how to provide for litter pickup. That's what the House of Disciples contract provides for us now. I understood council feedback to be uncomfortable with that and the instruction to be to lower that amount, and we'll set that amount at 50, reducing that overall budget line item by that amount, and we would discuss that further in the future. The next is the topic of the evening, Partners in Prevention. Thank y'all for being here tonight. We appreciate your investment. We appreciate all of the volunteer hours that each of you stood up here and talked about. We are deeply grateful for the investment that you've made in those young people and in our community. I did ask Mr. McPhee to look at what the budget for the prior year was. There was about an $86,000 increase in his original proposal. That includes, like I think we've kind of discussed tonight, making five mentors who were originally contract employees, full-time employees, and actually adding a full-time position. I have asked Mr. McPhee to absorb some of those positions, so the recommended budget tonight would include that two of those five would be part-time, not full-time, and the recommended addition of a mentoring coordinator would not be something that would happen this year. That does mean that from the original proposal of Mr. McPhee, $88,061 was removed from that Partners in Prevention budget. Now, I am happy to discuss this at council's wish and desire. This is what I felt council had provided instruction on, and of course, everyone here is an important voice and has a vote, and so to pass this budget, I need four of you to vote for it, and that's what I think gets it done. I think Ms. Hill would want me to correct, she had said last time, being caught off the cuff, that those coordinators made $30 an hour. They do not, they make 20, up to 23, based on their bilingual and experience. So those coordinators are doing an important job, and of course, we also value them. I think, did I cover all those changes?
Yes.
Did I miss anything?
Do the presentation.
Yeah, you can, I'm sorry, yes. I just wanted to make clear that those were instructions I gave to Mr. McPhee. It's his job to bring the proposal to us. He brought it to us. Council provided some feedback on changes they'd like, and I believe this accomplishes all of those things. But I am ready to hear the presentation.
Okay. And I'll turn this over to, to Dwayne Archer. The instruction, as the mayor told me, was to remove all fees except for the utility rates, and there are just a few slides he has to show on that. And, Mr. Archer?
Yeah, thank you all for allowing me to cover the water and sewer rate increase. If you'll see, this slide here shows the amount of revenue we receive from water and from the sewer. Give us a total of 1.9 million that we received from this rate increase. Oops, I went the wrong direction, excuse me. I wanted to show you just a few of the items that we've had major increases in. The raw water, I talked about before, the electricity, mechanical supplies, chemicals, and sleds removal. One thing to keep in mind, our actual expenditures that we have this year are lower than they were last year, but our revenues are still lower than those expenditures. This was a correction. The ARPA funds that we had yesterday, last year that we used, allowed us not to have the rate increase last year, but we still have that reduction in revenues this year. So what, what we could do, if you guys, if the decision was made, I want to cut the water and sewer rate increase, we would have to cut back our capital improvements to our system. The system's extremely important. I personally do not recommend that we make changes to the CIP as far as utilities, because when you, when you don't invest in the system, if you don't invest in that infrastructure, then you start to see failures. Here we have the list, High Street Elevated Storage Tower. It was last painted in 1997. It's a million-gallon tank. It is due to be painted. It was actually recommended to be painted in 2017. We've had to defer that, but it needs to be done now. The water and sewer main replacement, this is the main part, and you can see the different mains that were going to be replaced as part of water and the different ones for the sewer. Those would be the cuts that we would have to make to make up that 1.9 million dollars that we talked about in lost revenue from the rate increase. Our CIP for next year would then look like this. We would do that one line, a water line on Alpine, and then the sewer line on Crestview. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Archer, I'd like you to confirm for me. In managing that budget, you have pushed off, as long as you believe possible, a rate increase for water. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And to fail to increase the water fee at this time would have a negative impact on our water system because we would not be able to do the infrastructure requirements that you're proposing. Is that correct?
Exactly.
Thank you. Are there other questions for Mr. Archer? Go ahead, Steve.
Can we go back to the, the cut sheet? Didn't, on Kenwood and Avenue B, didn't we replace some of that start with when we did that bridge and all that right there?
There, there was some to be replaced, but we still got quite a bit between Avenue B and that northwest.
Well, do you feel like what we're, we're taking off, do you feel like it's going to survive at least another few more years?
I, I, I think if we make these cuts right here, if, if, if the, if the goal is survival, but that's not what we want, we want a good system that operates, and I think you'll, you'll take the risk of losing lines when you do this.
I'm not recommending that we take these off. I'm recommending we do what Mr. Archer originally recommended, which is the small water increase, which can we, do we have that slide to pull up and talk about that? Yeah. I am not recommending we make these cuts. Yeah, sorry. I didn't mean to be unclear. I am recommending that we move forward with this change as the only fee increase that we're talking about this year, but would be to allow for those projects to be done.
Yes, we'd be able to get them completed.
You got it, Ms. Perdell.
How long will these increases hold us for years to come? Two years, three years?
We, we...
Is this going to be a yearly thing from now on?
No, I don't think it's a yearly thing, but, but every year we have to look at it. I have no idea what costs will do.
I mean, I really, it's a minimal amount of money, and, and water and sewer are, you have no choice. I mean, water and sewer are vital to, to the livelihood of Longview. I mean, you just can't. The places that we saw that were cutting disturbed me a little bit because they were in areas of town where we probably really did need to replace some of those lines, because I grew up in, where I asked you a question about, and I can tell you, you know, that was probably there when I was growing up. So, you know, that, that bothers me, but at the same time, minimally increasing this, it'll keep us from every year having to come back and, and have a rate increase, a rate increase, a rate increase, you know, that...
I, I'll say this, Ms. Perdell, when we started this budget process, my list was twice as long, and we cut that back quite a bit. If we cut back more, I just, I, I feel there's a, you know, kind of a threat to our system.
But by doing this rate increase right here, we're, we're negating not having to, to cut those out of the budget.
Right.
Okay. Okay.
But I can't promise you about next year's. I can't promise that. But certainly, it's always our goal.
Thank you. Good.
I'm third.
Ms. Gamboa.
I was just going to ask to clarify. So on, on A, that would be with the increase of water fees, if we were to...
A would be as recommended, because Mr. McPhee has made that change. So if we approved item A under the budget, it would allow all of these projects to happen, and there would be the water increase to the users that was on the last slide.
Thank you. I am done.
Good. I think, anybody else?
Do you have the slide with the comparison of where Longview is on the price?
Yep, we sure do. I've just got to locate it. Yeah, that's the comparison to cities.
Thank you. And the other thing is, and I want just clarification, I understand it. Can we use fund balance for this, to these, make these improvements instead of, through the utility?
We, we actually, we actually are using a little fund balance to make this work.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And then, the other thing too, like this, this impacts commercial as well, like it's...
Commercial rates, yes.
And so, if you have a business that we're operating, and then that has a line break or issue that goes on, you're talking about affecting, you know, millions, millions of dollars in lost revenue and sales tax and other benefits for that system.
Yes, sir. You can see the impact of that 30-inch hat. I mean, this is significant.
That's all.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. McPhee? Go ahead, Ms. Moore.
So we're using fund balance and a water increase for these, for the projects?
Would you explain, Mr. Archer? You just mentioned that you're using some fund balance.
We, we, we have, we have a little bit of fund balance, and we, we use as much of that as we can.
Do you mean the fund balance as we use it? I don't think you do. He meant general reserves.
I meant general reserves.
General reserves. Okay, I'm sorry. We, our term tends to be fund balance on the, on the, go ahead, Roland, I'm sorry, you.
I think you need to re-answer John's question.
Yeah.
So you, do you use any of the general operating reserves?
No, we do not.
That we've previously discussed in making that balance?
I'm sorry, we do not. We use a utilities fund balance. So it's the utilities has similar thing, general fund does. We have money in the bank, and there's, there's an obligation for us to keep a certain amount in there.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Yep, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Archer? Any other presentation or discussion regarding fees or budget that we need to cover? I guess we're open for discussion. Are there items of discussion that council would like to have, or comments they'd like to make on my recommendations on how to address those concerns?
I'd like to make a motion for item A to be approved with an amendment to keep the Partner in Prevention line item.
Thank you for that. Let me get to budget item A, and that would actually be B.
Well, then you have to do it for both, because on the fees and charges, those were suggestions, so I would have to strike that one suggestion, which is what I'm asking to do. I would have to do that on both.
Okay, that's fine. Is there any other comments or discussion before we move to that? Go ahead, Ms. Moore.
So, I want to talk about Partners in Prevention, are we?
Yep.
Okay, so can we go over?
Go ahead.
I just want to go over where we were. Mr. McPhee, if you would, from Partners in Prevention, where we were as far as budget-wise, and what we're doing now, the number-wise, so they can understand, you know, the, the difference in how the city of Longview has always dedicated to Partners in Prevention.
Yes, if you would, allow me to, to call the expert on the Partners in Prevention. She's the one that did the budget requests that I had given her for reducing the budget and explaining what last year's budget is compared with the proposed one this year.
Per council directive last Thursday, we reduced the original request for FY 2425 by $88,061 to provide a balanced budget or a flat budget. The original request, if we had kept that $88,000, would have allowed us to comply with the Department of Labor requirements, and would have allowed us to have three full-time employees, mentoring coordinators, working on the program. And that particular request, the general fund would have paid 44.35% of the entire cost. Grants would have paid 22.94 of the entire cost. And Friends of Partners in Prevention, which includes fundraising and donations, would have paid 32.71% of the cost. With the suggested reductions from last Thursday, we didn't have much time to prepare this, so we came back with the two part-time employees, and we haven't really addressed what that's going to mean to the rest of the program.
Okay, so what I was asking was, I wanted to let everyone know where we were at, like at the end, we were at $589,659, and it's still, that budget still increased to $625,000.
I, I was instructed to compare the appropriated budget for FY 2324 without the cost savings. We had a vacancy this past year that provided some cost savings. That's not normally there. So the original allocated budget was...
So let me explain. If you look in the second column, it, the adjusted budget for 2023 to '24, that's the existing year that we are on, is $627,763. So the proposed budget for next year is 625,567, which is roughly $2,200 less. The year-end estimate is they experienced savings due to vacancies within that group, but we're still planning on funding them at a level with the current appropriated budget.
That's what I wanted to be clear for everybody.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions for Ms. Hill?
If there's no more questions, I have a motion. Can I get a second?
Okay. Well, I have not moved from presentation yet.
Oh, okay.
And discussion, go ahead, Mr. Conley.
Yes, I, I appreciate all the people that are here for Partners in Prevention and all they do to be mentors for our kids. I think there's been a misunderstanding that we just got clarification on, as far as the city's funding, which is really $2,000, approximately $2,000 less.
That is with the cuts. Yes, sir.
Then, then what the adjusted budget was going to be, and it's actually more than our year-end estimate for '23, '24. We're, we're, we are, I want to support this program. I want to be more involved and educated in how it operates, and I'm, I'll make a commitment to do that at, at our school district and others, and make sure we're, we're not neglecting the needs of these kids. And I think a lot of people in this room, you know, these are tough decisions, but I appreciate the amount of effort that went into this since Thursday from our mayor and our city manager, assistant city manager, and all these directors. I appreciate the discussion of our council, because these are tough things to, to look at, but we know that the, the future is our kids, and this, we're not going to neglect that. So I hope that's understood and appreciated. And again, thank you guys for working through this budget and what you've done here.
Thank you, Mr. Conley. Ms. Wade.
Yes, Mayor, I feel it's only right that I come in, being the city liaison, council liaison to Partners in Prevention. I've had a time or a chance to be around them. I want to applaud them on the work that they do. I was a young kid growing up in South Longview and benefited strongly from mentors. What you're witnessing tonight with our council and this discussion with Partners in Prevention, a lot of times are not things that actually happened on our city council. And so, to those that are here with PIP, continue to do what you do. Hopefully, this council will realize that the adjustments were made. A large part of those were due through federal mandates, not because we're looking to do anything different on this council to increase our budget in any kind of way. So to the staff, to the volunteers, please continue to work with our youth, continue to please mentor them. We all need that. And all those that came here tonight, I applaud you. Thank you for coming. Don't let this discourage you at all. That's it, Mayor.
Just, I just want to make a comment.
Go ahead.
Sorry. I also wanted to just thank everybody for their work in Partners in Prevention. I know that it's really hard work that you guys do. I personally have the privilege of knowing a lot of you and working with a lot of you, and so in my comments last week, I did not mean to have any detrimental impact. I think as, as we kind of bring subjects up and we talk up here, it's easy to get carried away on one thing that we're talking about and really just hone in on it, but I want to reiterate what I said last meeting, that I am very supportive of mentorship. I've seen a lot of people firsthand that serve. I personally benefited from having a mentor in my life, and so I'm really grateful for the work that you guys do. I would like to echo Mr. Wade that, please don't be discouraged by these things. It's also tough for us to even contemplate making cuts, period, from any part of the budget. We'd all like to operate at the best level that we can. It's a hard time during these times, but we, I understand the commitment that you guys put in, the hard work and the efforts, and so I'm just really appreciative of that, and I just wanted to echo that, and thank you all for sharing your voice and coming out here tonight.
Thank you. I am going to close the presentation. I'm going to move on to budget item A, and I believe I have a motion already for Ms. Gamboa.
Second.
So the motion is to approve budget item A with restoring Partners in Prevention to the original requested amount. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I believe that budget item passes. Failure to vote is a vote for, so abstaining is a vote for. So, budget item B, is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the budget and to make an amendment to keep the Partners in Prevention line item.
Thank you. I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second to approve the budget, restoring the Partners in Prevention amount to the original requested amount, which would put back the 88061 that was removed in my recommendation for tonight. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? One voting against the budget. Budget is approved. We'll move on next. Thank you, guys. Thank you all for being here tonight. Next, we'll move on to our executive session item, which is Personnel Matters. Personnel Matters, under Texas Government Code Section 551.074, to discuss and evaluate the duties of the city manager. Our next meeting will be tomorrow at 9:30 a.m. Should you like to join us for the conclusion of our budget meetings. Thank you, guys, so much. We will not reconvene at the end of the executive session. You guys are free to go home.